It's seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Father, would you please?
Thank you.
Almighty God, we come before you listening for your will and praying your blessings upon the work and deliberations of this administration and board. All honor, glory, and honor goes to you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, amen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Be Texas.
Pretty quick.
I think somebody should just pray for a better Super Bowl halftime.
Yeah, that was bad.
Number two, oh go ahead, sorry.
The commercials, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's.
There were some good ones.
Number two oath of office for new board member.
Judy, do you have the oath?
I don't have the oath.
Okay.
We can come back to it.
Why did you say I will?
I meant to say something to you today and I just completely forgot about it. Do you want to just, um, come back to?
Yeah.
Number three, vote on reorganization of the board members. Is that something we should wait on until?
That's up to you guys, if you want to.
Can we just leave it the same?
You can leave it the same.
Well, we can, I'm just saying, should we swear him in before we do it?
Perhaps you should.
Yes.
Perhaps we should do that. And we can talk about it.
Good call, Mr. President.
Number four, approval of consult agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at board meetings will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all these items. The consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and the approval of the following. And everybody can read, so A through L.
And, uh, let me, let me just give you the, a brief report on the general and I'll do the, um, uh, building and then we'll let, um, Amanda kind of give you a rundown on the child nutrition and Judy on activity and treasurer's report. Um, we, um, there's, it, it, there's not a lot to say. We, we received as much as we did last month basically and we spent as much, I mean, child nutrition's really doing well. Uh, we have fifty-one thousand dollars in, uh, fifty-one eight oh eight, child nutrition. And last year at this time, we have, we're in the hole about eleven thousand dollars. So we're doing well, we're doing really well, so I'll just, if you have questions on that, I'll leave those to her. Uh, building fund, um, last year we had seventy thousand dollars. Uh, this year we have two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Uh, we do know that we have committed, uh, that money to, um, our bond projects. So we are letting it grow and making it get healthy so that we have that money there available. Um, last year in the general fund, we had three million six hundred nine dollars. And this, this month in the general fund, we have four million five hundred thirty-four dollars. So, uh, four million five, uh, four point five million dollars, about that. Um, what we've seen is a stabilization of gross production. We're no longer seeing the huge.
Fluctuations.
Fluctuations. Uh, as I've said before, when I got here, it was about three hundred thousand dollars a month we were getting it. And now it's about a hundred and fifty, but it, last month it was a hundred and sixty, so, and it was a hundred and fifty-one this, this month. So it's only like nine thousand dollars. Definitely can live with that, just couldn't live if it was going to go down to zero. Cause you know, we don't get a lot of state aid. And, and then the good part about that is that when there's state aid cuts, we don't get a lot of cuts either. We just have to live and die by gross production sometimes. But one of the things that did happen is that we did see a three hundred thousand dollar increase in our local valuation money, our ad loan. It was, uh, I want to say, if I had to just put my finger on it, it was probably because you had a full year of Jiffy Trips, Sonic, and, uh, Quick Stop as opposed to half a year. And then I'm like, I'm not sure what else might have been a factor in that because I'm just not sure what the, the growth was. But, you know, we'll look for things, but right now, we're in, we're in the, probably the best financial shape I would say that Cherokee's ever been in. And, uh, that's very comforting and good to know. So we are able to do some things that, you know, we, we maybe neglected in the past with looking forward some, uh, fixing some things at the schools, some carpet in some rooms, um, uh, heating and air things that, that aren't necessarily what you get on the front of the, when you don't have money. So, uh, our spending, um, is just kind of e- evening out. And that's, that makes it easier for me if I can start seeing months that kind of look the same so that I can project what happens for the next year and the year after that. So that's kind of where we're getting to right now. And things are looking, looking good. And, uh, for the last few years, you guys have, uh, done a good job of, um, making sure that you didn't, you know, spend every dime that came in. And now you're reaping the benefit of that by having a cushion to live on while, uh, there's some bad times in the economy. So kudos to you all. Um, other than that, and that's the paper, the paper, paper I'm looking at is this one right here. It's always in there, you can look at it. Um, do you have any questions about general or building fund? It's just, um, times are good for us as far as, uh, fund balances.
Okay, we have any questions unless you guys just have something you want to show us or anything that's outstanding or?
Nothing, I know, but you can look down through that.
Does anybody have any questions or?
There's one check that came out of a bond fund for fifteen hundred dollars that's not usual. It's like a once a year thing, it's for, um, they keep our money, fifteen hundred dollars, rental.
Kind of like the ATM charges you three ninety-five to get your own money.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda, A through L?
Make a motion.
TJ's made the motion, Jeff's second, Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Okay.
Swing back up to number two. Did you get oath of office and stuff?
I like it right by me, Mrs. Amber.
So number two oath of office for new board members.
Okay, there you go. You just repeat after us, raise your right hand and repeat.
Want me to read that?
Yep.
Uh, Jeff White hereby declare under oath that I will faithfully perform the duties of board member of Cherokee Public Schools District ten forty-six to the best of my abilities. And that I will faithfully discharge all the duties pertaining to said office and obey the Constitution and laws of the United States of Oklahoma.
Tada, you're official.
Amen.
And then a signature official, I'm not just. Cause you really mean it when you sign it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
It's the, repeat after me.
You silently swear.
Number three, vote on reorganization of board members.
I make a motion to leave the, the organization the way it is. Uh, I make a motion to leave it the way it is.
Anybody else have anything?
As long as Amber's okay with it, I guess.
I'll second that.
Tony made the motion, Jeff's second? Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Simple enough.
Don't let me forget Judy, will you? Uh, well, to get on the OSSBA website and just turn it back in that way.
Okay.
I'll, I'll never remember.
They should be emailing, they'd leave an email and send me a form in the mail to fill out.
Number five, discussion and vote to approve or not approve the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school calendar.
It's in there, it's very similar to what we did this year, really no changes whatsoever. It's, uh. If you have any questions, let me know, or comments. We're going a hundred and sixty-three days. Um, six professional development. It puts us within our hours of one thousand eighty hours with a few to spare in the event that we have to take out for something we didn't know about, but there's enough days in there that if we had to take out a lot of time, we could just adjust the days that we're out.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the school calendar.
Just made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Tony's second, Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Number six, discussion and vote to approve or not approve the new twenty-four seven tobacco policy.
Oh, I've got it there for you. Um, we have some ladies here today that are going to kind of go over that a little bit for you. Kind of ask, answer questions if you have questions. What this will do for us is, um, really, um, step us up towards a healthy schools and put us online for some healthy schools grants. Um, it also, um, you know, gives us kind of a guideline to go by to make sure that we're providing enough exercise and the right nutrition and our vending machines are, um, you know, what they need to be, which we, we changed that when I came in. So we've got water and Gatorade, G two, those kind of things, but I'm going to turn it over to you ladies.
No ho-hos?
My name is Yolanda Cresswell, I'm the Healthy Living Program Coordinator and this is Kathy Gordon. Um, and we cover Woods, Alfalfa, and Major County. And, um, we just picked up Alfalfa County, so you guys are, you were kind of out there and I asked to pick you guys up cause nobody else was going to take you.
Well, thank you.
Nobody wanted it.
I got a bad rap.
You guys have been very positive between the community and the school and all the businesses around, so.
Good.
I'm very excited to work with this community. Um, a twenty-four seven policy, um, this year, the governor passed, um, that all public schools are tobacco-free twenty-four seven. Um, what that policy in front of you has added in there is the e-cigarettes. Um, so you would go a little bit stronger than the state law. And there's, Alva School has this policy in place, Fairview Schools has this place, in place, um, Allen Cleo and Simron Schools, uh, they all have this exact policy. So what it does is it makes sure campus twenty-four seven, that would be, um, at your football games. Nobody could use tobacco and throw their cigarette butts on your new football field. And, um, so this would be anywhere on school property. And that, that contains like with bus barns everywhere. Anywhere the school owns property, it would be tobacco-free. And, um, what this does is lead your school to show the kids who might see adults using tobacco. So there's a, a good chance that if they don't see, as you guys are leaders to them, they will not use tobacco in their future. That's why it's kind of important, is, um, why as grantees throughout the state, we push this to show, to help our state become healthier, cause we are very unhealthy state. So this is kind of a step up to do that. The plus of it, as she said, next year you guys can be eligible to apply for a healthy incentive grant. Um, I can't remember the amount, it depends on like how many kids you have enrolled, but you do have money for that. And that money can be used within your school for anything that's related to health issues.
You guys help us with that grant or?
It's pretty easy and even the TSET people that are over there, I will have them come down and meet with your superintendent one-on-one. And she will help you say, okay, you, this is what you, so really we can get you, get the money.
Okay.
And after you pass this policy, we can provide signage. Um, I don't know if you guys were at Northwestern, you saw the tobacco-free signs. Um, I heard, our office purchased those for, so you would not, your school would out, would not have that cost.
Okay.
So those are metal, um, pretty durable sign. And then if they ever like, over a couple of years, something happens to them, or, um, we can replace those.
Okay.
You guys have any questions for me for this policy?
Pretty cut and dry?
I did bring everybody, so.
E-cigarette? Some squeezes? I may need two.
Plenty in there.
Didn't we just, didn't we just, um?
The broccoli.
Didn't we pass, talk about the e-cigarettes not too long?
We talked about it, I think, the very first of the school year and I don't know that I.
We never acted on it.
Brought the policy out at that time.
And the disciplinary actions up to the school, right?
Yeah. It's kind of the first time is a warning, second time goes to parents.
It's kind of the same with, with, uh, somebody got.
More of a tomato than a peach.
But yeah, we're not really changing the policy of what we do, uh, as, as far as a consequence. We're just stepping it up to say that we're twenty-four seven and we also, um, are putting e-cigarettes in that. You know, it's, um, it's just something that we'll announce at the beginning of ballgames, you know, that we are twenty-four seven tobacco-free. That means that, you know.
The spit cups.
Yeah, the spit cups are fine in the game.
Yeah, please, please, please.
Then we sick, get these girls to sic 'em.
That's what my plan is.
I know, everyone has to be an advocate for non-smoking, so we all as individuals have to say, did you know this campus is twenty-four seven? We appreciate you not bringing smoking here. Usually, um, that's always been a concern, like how can we control this or enforce it? Usually, um, we come and enforce this as well.
You get the signage all over the place and be.
And then we can even run ads for you guys in the paper and it even helps promote, so.
What I think is ironic about this is that our governor is proposing a dollar fifty sales tag on cigarettes to give raises until everybody gets smoked. So I don't know, does that work? We're trying to get people not to smoke, but that's what we're pinning raises on.
Well, thanks for coming in and discussing.
We appreciate you guys.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Just made the motion, TJ's second, Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, discussion and vote to approve contract with ADPC for the twenty sixteen seventeen school year for the financial software system at a cost of fifty-five twenty, that's four hundred and sixty dollars per month.
I'll kind of just let Judy speak to this one, she uses it, they use it more than I do and it's our financial system.
I love it, they're, they're worth it, what they charge. It's been four fifty-five for several years now, they, I see they have to five dollars. But anytime we need help, all we have is call, we have a live person, so the case number and maybe a return call in twenty-four hours.
Judy needs it?
I need it.
We're happy everyone's happy, that's right.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
TJ's second?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Number seven, discussion and vote to co-op with Allen Cleo for the twenty sixteen baseball season.
Um, I'm going to let Jeremy talk a little bit about that, he and Tyler have talked, yeah, he's got right back up. Um, Allen Cleo has about three kids that want to play baseball and I'll just turn it over to you. We've, we've batted it back and forth and.
Well, Tyler had come, had stopped by and asked a while back about, uh, co-op with Allen Cleo that their coach had contacted them, said he had two or three, maybe four kids that wanted to play. We usually play two games per night, we would play, so it was an opportunity that, uh, we discussed. And then, you know, I told Tyler, the pros are gone with any situation and the pros felt like it was something he wanted to pursue. And we thought it would be good to bring up those kids and maybe we would have a chance to play those two or three, the opportunity to play, so.
Then we used to do football and baseball with them?
We did co-op football at one time with them. I thought it was done in baseball.
Yeah, just, just football.
Okay, okay. So we have done it in the past.
So we just kind of, you know, I think we did discuss it pretty heavily, the three of us. And what we finally came down to was what kids, you know, we don't, we just didn't want to have kids that couldn't participate because they have, we're at a school that just didn't have enough kids to play, so.
How many kids do we have coming out for, for Cherokees, so, from Cherokees?
Tyler seems to think he's got about twenty.
So you, I don't know.
And then these are the things that we talked about.
Because if you, you got twenty kids coming out here and then you bring three over here and those three kids maybe start.
Yep, I mean, those are all the things we talked about.
I don't know.
How many uniforms does he have?
I just ordered five more jerseys in the event that we did this, he hadn't, uh, and we probably had enough if we did not order more, but we wanted to make sure.
What's the coach's thoughts on it? He wants to do it, he was the one that came to me and asked him to, he's, he's on board.
I mean, if we, if the shoe was on the other foot, we would want them to accept our kids, so.
Right.
See how we could turn them down.
That, the.
I just know we got twenty kids though.
The, the bad thing side is, what Tony's saying is that if there's a child from Allen Cleo that gets to play before our kid plays, you're probably going to get some calls about that. But then I thought about that, I thought, you know what? That's kind of back to, everybody gets a participation ribbon. You know what, play, play hard, play your hardest all the time, get better, play because you can play, not because of who you are. And I understand Tony's side too, because we will get those calls.
Well, and if I got, you know, if I was a kid that was, made the starter position and somebody came from the other town and beat me out, I'd have to step on game.
Right, work harder.
I don't know.
And it's.
I understand your concern, Tony, I just, if the shoe was on the other foot, I'd have a harder time.
I understand it, but now, if we only had eleven boys, twelve boys, fifteen boys, then I'd be more apt to say yes. But we've got twenty boys, that's, that's two teams. That's two teams.
My thinking on that end of it was, I, I told him, I said, you tell me who those twenty are, that's a lot of kids.
Is there a chance they'll show up with more than that, you know, if they, we?
Uh, he just told me two or three, he just said there was two or three boys that wanted to play. I.
But I mean, if, if a couple guys start coming and some, a couple more want to come, is that an open invitation?
Digital, digital.
If they get, if they get enough to where it looks like they could find one more, two more, they need to go ahead and play their own games.
Yeah.
If they have two or three kids that can't play, that's different. But if they get, if they send us over here five or six, I, I would have trouble with that also. Because if you have six kids, surely you can shake three more out of the halls. And here's what we can do too.
Three kids, we had thirty or thirties now and.
Back then?
When we were on state, that's when Henry Washington, that's where it came from, now.
Most times.
And he was a star until he became a gentleman.
There are pros and cons to it.
That's right.
Any other discussion for?
I'll make a motion to accept the co-op.
I'll second. Jeff's made the motion, TJ's second, Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Heller?
No.
Number eight, discussion and vote to purchase or not purchase a tractor or implements.
Okay, I've got all that out there in front of you. Um, TJ helped me a lot, you guys know tractors a whole lot better than I do.
Way to go TJ.
Um, I do not, um, farm. I do not pretend to farm. But I do, uh, know that I, from just purchasing equipment from other schools, that I do like John Deere. Um, it's very sturdy, uh, very, um, always been a good buy for, for me, as, at our schools.
Very sturdy.
Well, you know, you should have seen what the.
They'll be making a commercial.
What the guys were doing on the. On the gator that we had, they were standing on it almost upside down, putting the time, you know, clocks up the other day. So, um, what I would like for you to do is, what I asked her to do was to put every implement in there. And if you see something in there that you don't feel like is something that we would definitely need, we can take it out of the quote, which ended up being about twenty-nine thousand dollars. If you feel like everything that I have put in there is something that we will utilize and we need for our school, then I would ask you to approve it as a, as a group. But if you, um, and, and right now what we're doing basically is piecing and borrowing with what we have. And so this is, uh, will be put into the bus barn, locked up and.
Were there any plans for the old tractor?
I think, uh, TJ had it fixed at his own cost. And then we've just got the old tractor to decide what we want to do with it.
Shane made a, he said an idea, or threw an idea at me to give it to the Boag, people let him fix it up and auction it off or sell raffle tickets.
Yeah.
They're only going to give us about fifteen hundred dollars.
Or perhaps do that for athletics, because we've spent a lot of money in athletics this year.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I mean.
Just talk to.
Does anybody have anything to add or take away from the quotes we got there?
And this was Tyler's thoughts and I agree with them, the groomer mower isn't just a regular brush hog, it's like a real, it's a fairway mower, it's not like.
Right, it's a, it's a finish mower.
You can mow outfield, playgrounds, all that stuff, it's not like a brush hog. We already have a new brush hog.
Right.
It's on that tractor.
Where's that at TJ?
The, it's the Frontier GM one oh eight four rear grooming mower.
On the second page?
Yes.
Four thousand?
It's a, it's a high dollar piece of machinery, but it, it's like having, I mean, it's a.
Okay.
A bigger version of the, you know, the zero turn deal, so it'll help, they can run both of them and mow. I think we're planning on mowing everything ourselves and not contracting around next year.
Well, that timer's going to be on the mower. And once the sod goes down, they've told us that we will treat it like it's green, we just water, water, water. And, um, and then once it starts growing, it'll just be a full-time job to get it, get, to keep it all there.
Now, is Tyler, is Tyler going to fertilize it and everything else and treat it like that or?
Um, I don't know if that's legal, I mean, I honestly don't know if he can do that. I mean, you, you almost have to have someone outside come and do that that's qualified, you've got to have an applicator's license and stuff like that.
Okay.
We'll have to be careful on that.
Okay.
We are working kind of with our water. Um, the well water doesn't have anything.
No, it does not.
And we will have to use our well water because we can't, uh, go back and forth because of cross contamination.
Right.
And so, um, we will have to look at doing something else.
What, uh, what is this, can you, do you know what's all on here as a listed?
Well, tell me what you're talking about.
Well, this one's a mounted front blade with the, I don't know what that is.
Um, that kind, that is not, um, it's not attached to like to the.
Right, it's a.
That's the Frontier.
That's like, is that a scraper blade, like for doing parking lots?
That's what.
Okay, it's like a skid steer direction, a front eight-way blade, okay. And, and she gave you the, I mean, the package deal, I mean, it's pretty much what they have on the trailer.
Yep. And she did say the same tractor is going to go, that same tractor will be more expensive in a few months than it is right now because I guess then the changeover.
Carrier, right. So they have one in stock, I mean, it's.
What year is that one? Twenty sixteen?
Yep.
Can you make out this guy's name?
I mean, if we can afford it, I say get everything we can, that way we don't have to borrow and, I mean, we've had neighbors.
I agree.
Everybody, we've had to borrow several.
You know, the trailer's not going to get utilized with the tractor a lot, but it comes with the package deal and the school could always use a trailer whether they're moving desks.
Moving desks, yeah.
We're always borrowing trailers from somebody.
Yeah.
Too many things, we've got to keep her locked down.
Yes.
It doesn't get lifted, that's right.
So there's one, two, three, four, five different pieces of equipment?
The loader, the loader's on the tractor.
Oh, is it?
That's, that's one of them, it's a tractor with a loader and then it comes with the.
So there's four different pieces.
You got a straight blade, a box blade.
The box blade is part of the package and then the, the addition is the groomer mower, that's a little higher than, I think it was a thousand dollars difference in the brush, in the brush hogs today, that's a little bit different. Pallet forks, was that on there?
No, uh, I asked for it, yes, and, um, and.
I don't think I saw, I don't think I saw.
I didn't see them in there.
I saw.
I think I thought it, I asked for it.
There it is, yep, a thousand ninety-eight dollars.
Yeah.
That was Tyler's idea because they're unloading and loading stuff quite a bit and moving stuff around, it's, they are very handy, so. I don't see a problem with it.
Anybody else has anything, I'll make a motion.
My second.
TJ's second, Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Is there a certain model or something they could add on there?
Thirty thirty-two E tractor, package, I would just put package. Cause that's how they advertise it in the papers and stuff.
Number nine, principal reports. You need a fruit to squeeze?
What?
Yeah, I need some broccoli.
Uh, the first thing I'm going to show you is really, you'll sit, look at and say, there's nothing here, but it's the annual dropout report. We don't have any, which is less, so there's nothing there to see. Uh, but this is something that they require every year for us to do for our folders for the accreditation at the end of the year.
Cool.
It'll always be that great, but this year it's great.
It's good.
The other thing is, uh, every year they do require us to show, I've made a couple copies, if you guys want to pass it around, here's a look. Um, I highlighted some other schools our size. Basically, the remediation, annual remediation report is just showing when our kids leave here, how many of them are having to be remediated when they go to college for English, math, et cetera. The last report that they showed, uh, we had seven, that year, which tells you how much smaller we were then, we had seventeen seniors in the fall two thousand thirteen, seven of them, seven of them were remediated. Um, it's, excuse me, we had seven students enroll and we had one remediated in English and one in math. So that's not too bad, you know, that's something that we have to continue to work on.
Who were the other schools?
Yeah, there was a school in the state there. Yeah, there was a school in the state there.
Okay.
I just highlighted, uh, this is our county and then I highlighted some other schools that are similar to our size, if you guys wanted to look at that.
What year was that remediated?
That was the fall of two thousand three.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Two thousand thirteen, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Did I say three? They're always a little bit back on their data, so.
Looks a lot better than that.
So let's not forget that, one in English and one in math. Another little house, house.
He may have that.
Did we gain any students?
Uh.
Did we gain any students?
Yes.
Enrollment.
Yes, seven of seventeen were remediated.
Here, give him, let him see this.
Give me a look at this. Oh, they like this.
And that's my fault. Seven, and then two out of, out of, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
I did run out a minute ago, I just wanted to kinda tell you, so you would know, I did present Mr. Hickman, he was awarded, a recipient of the National Federation of State High School Associations Coach of the Year for Boys and Trax. So out of the state of Oklahoma, he was recognized nationally as the coach from Oklahoma, so.
Way cool.
I did present him a plaque, uh, he took some pictures of him, um, so. Uh, just quickly moving into things going on, uh, obviously we're playing basketball right now, districts start Friday, Saturday at Turpin. Long ways for districts, but anyway, um, we are hosting our first tournament in a long time and it is called the Bill West Speech and Debate Tournament in Enid. This weekend, the twelfth and thirteenth, that's on the NOC campus in Enid. So that was kinda neat, been a long time since we've hosted, actually been able to host a tournament. Uh, the local show is February the fourteenth. And then the Alfalfa County Show is February the fifteenth. So there's several things going on, basketball's starting to wind towards the end, uh, speech tournaments, FFA, I don't know, I'm sure Mrs., uh. Can you talk about the music program on the twenty-third?
No, go ahead.
We are hosting a music program on the, on February twenty-third at seven P M. Uh, living the roots of music for, for the community, if there's anything you wanna add, you can add that in.
And the library, uh, has brought, uh, this musician in and this will be the first of many things that we hope to provide for our community to come in and have an evening of entertainment. Um, and, uh, so.
Where's it gonna be?
In the auditorium.
In our room.
Mm-hmm.
February twenty-third.
Twenty-third, is it twenty-fifth?
Twenty-third, I think.
Twenty-third, I thought. Twenty-third and, um.
At seven?
At seven, so, you know, we'll, we're gonna get that out there and people don't have, you know, anything to do on a Monday night.
We're gonna advertise that?
Uh, I think the library is, but I think if they had a flyer, we're gonna try to send it home. And get it out there, so people will know that, that, I don't know, the, maybe our paper, we'll put it in the paper and they'll come out.
Nudge, nudge.
Nudge, nudge.
I said, maybe our paper, we'll put it in the paper.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hickman.
Number ten, superintendent.
Oh, we got Ms. Richmond.
Oh, sorry. Oh, my gosh.
She's so quiet over there.
We have our third and fourth year play in the Timberlake Elementary Basketball Tournament next Monday, Tuesday. And fifth grade students taking the writing test on February twenty-third.
Rowing that along.
I have to say, um, you know, uh, Mrs. Richmond has a wonderful staff and, uh, we had a, an incident happen a couple weeks ago that was pretty, um, was a difficult thing to handle. And, um, involved competitionally and involved a lot of things and could have been, uh, just a much worse, but her staff handled it so beautifully. That, um, it just really was just not even a, a blip on the radar, so. So, she was gone and, and they, um, to be commended for the job that they did with handling a, a pretty, um, a pretty, um, sensitive situation with the, with some kids, so. So really, thank, uh, the high school and, and junior high staff, of course, are awesome also, but it's real fortunate that we have a lot of good, good educators in our buildings.
Got all your surveillance down?
Yep, through here with her.
Yeah.
Coming handy already. Going around.
Yeah. Good deal. Thanks, Ruth.
Thank you.
Number ten, superintendent.
Well, we are going fast and furious, like I said, we've got security cameras going up, um, we've got, uh, training on Wednesday with new radio systems schoolwide. That all of us will have a handheld now, that has our own, uh, frequency and then we can talk to administration or we can talk to everybody and we'll be training on that Wednesday. It's like step one of our safety, school safety upgrade.
It's a good idea.
And so, as we go, uh, we'll, our next step will be to have a, uh, safe school meeting with anybody that wants to come in the community and also have some kids to be on it and things like that. So that we can start updating our safety policies and getting a good plan for, for disasters and things like that. Um, of course, we've also got, uh, a fire marshal walkthrough coming up. Um, we wanted to do it this week, but we have low water pressure, so we're having a hard time being able to get, um, a time set for that to happen. So that we can make sure that everything's a go with, with the water and stuff like that, so hopefully.
The whole city's down.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, hopefully first of next week, we'll be walking through at the fire marshal on the complex in the Ag Barn. Ag Barn might be done Friday if, if the water pressure is there. So, um, things are really coming to a, uh, kind of a close with, with the facility and things like that. We do have, um, I, uh, Scott Borman's coming up on Wednesday to take some pictures, uh, some questions that we had on the punch walk. Uh, about, to see where things, maybe if anything needed to be moved or, uh, reevaluated and things like that, before we sign up on that, um.
Do you need some backup with that or you want anybody else to be there or you're just gonna handle it yourself?
No, Scott and I'll, he's just gonna take pictures and they'll take them back and they'll evaluate.
James isn't coming, then you're buddy.
No.
Sorry.
He was just a little, he just.
Boy, I gotta do it.
Well, it's ridiculous, it's ridiculous.
I just.
The thing that I feel like with, is if, own it if it's yours.
Right.
If it's not yours, okay, but if, if you've made a mistake.
Teach us a bunch of BS and try to cover it up.
Right.
Own up to and handle it.
Yeah, so, um.
Spend plenty of money.
Yes, we have, uh, so anyway, we're, um, looking forward to, uh, getting our new building plans and things like that. Also still working with the fire marshal on how many bathrooms that has to be, so it's just a process and it's, um, it's going, going well.
It's a fun one.
Mm-hmm, always fun.
What about the bus barn, when's that gonna be, when, when can we utilize that?
Um, we are, we've been utilizing it, we took it out because we put the doors up and things like that. And we're waiting on that trailer to be moved out from Crossland because AEC's gonna put a new pole up.
Power to it.
For power to it.
Oh, okay.
And then once we get that, and then it's probably best if the buses aren't in there if the fire marshal, fire marshal comes. So we're just kinda waiting that out and, uh, so.
Weren't they supposed to move the trailer this week?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't that what they told?
I think they were supposed to go today.
Yesterday or today, that's what I thought it said.
So, um.
That'd mean next week.
Well, I'm not really too excited for them to get out here if they're not finished.
Right.
And they, they've already got Mark going to a new location a week from today. So, um, he's really trying to make sure that everything is right before he goes, cause once they get out of here, it'll be hard to get it back.
Yeah, it'll be hard to get them back.
Yeah. So, um, just make that last payment.
Yeah, that's, that's right, I mean, we don't pay him till it's done.
Yeah. So anyway, um, it just, um, seems like we are looking right now, just, just kind of in apple eye. Uh, Michelle's got, uh, three good bids on a new ag truck, so at our next board meeting, we'll talk about an ag truck. And we are just, this year are gonna try to do what we need to do to get it set right and, um, because we are, we are gonna probably end up paying next year an overage with our carryover. But our carryover would have to go down to like one point six for us not to, so.
Really?
We'll just have to bite the bullet and pay it because we're not.
Percentage of?
Yeah, we're not gonna spend.
What is, what is that percent, do you?
It's a formula, it's not really a percent, yeah, it's.
It's a tax.
It's a formula, it's compared to the state average on ADN.
Take it back.
So anyway, so, um, other than that, um, things going very well. Um, any, any questions about anything? Kinda.
I guess.
All right, thank you. Moving on, number eleven, uh, board to consider and take possible action in the absence of the president and or clerk to appoint an acting president and or acting clerk for the school district to execute any and all documents pertaining to setting the maturities, date, time, and place of the bond sale. So basically a secondary, wouldn't that be what our vice president could?
Our clerk has to do it.
The clerk has to.
Yeah, so we have to, tonight, since Amber's not here, we have to, um, assign that to somebody to, for, for the evening and so is.
So it's just a for tonight?
Just for tonight, mm-hmm, we just have to make the.
I make a motion that our vice president TJ. Can use his little signature.
Thanks.
I will second that. He was good at that to me.
Can I take him to the game and watch my nephew?
Littleville? Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Eller?
Yes, you can take him upstairs and.
Okay, so, uh, we got TJ as clerk for the evening.
That means TJ gets to sign checks.
My wife doesn't even let me do that, watch out.
Yeah.
Welcome aboard TJ. Number twelve, board to consider and take action on a resolution determining the maturities of and setting a date, time, and place for the sale of the seven hundred thousand dollar building bonds of the school district and designating bond council for this issuance of bonds. And I'll make a motion to approve the resolution with the date of March ninth, twenty sixteen at one P M in the high school library that we had.
Cause that's March ninth, if, if everybody can be there, um, and it's at one, and all we're gonna do is sell the bonds, it won't take very long at all, unless we.
Where we gonna do that?
Here in the library, unless we go ahead and, and it should be a long board meeting in March, go ahead and do our regular board meeting that, at that time, because our board is, meeting is falling on spring break. So we might go ahead and just do it all at that time.
I like that idea.
Okay, you got a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I made the motion.
You may all second, you can kinda second it though. You sounded like that idea, that's good.
I made the motion.
Sorry.
Littleville?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Eller?
Yes.
Did you get that date?
March ninth at one o'clock?
Yes.
It's a Wednesday at one.
Is there an extra copy of that?
Uh, yeah.
I'm ready to.
And then I've got the paperwork here, but it has to sign forever, but there, everybody needs to sign this, so nobody kinda get away until they get it done.
Number eleven, new business.
There is no new business.
Number twelve, motion to vote to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Second.